This conference will now be recorded.
I won the chapel of the month award.
Is that right, of the month?
The best press chapel in six.
Gosh, just my old after-six clothes. I don't remember, probably. Honestly, it's so old, I don't remember. Or I'm so old, I don't remember, one of the two. Yeah, you're right about that.
Come on in, Jennifer, what are you waiting for? We've been waiting for you.
Now we can start. We want to make sure we have the first call. Call the mayor, councilman door. Fire?
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening as to ask your guidance for the mayor, administrator's staff, and members of the city council who need to make these important decisions for the betterment of our city and its people. We are so thankful for their dedication to serve this community in their several capacities. We're also thankful for all of our first responders, police, fire, ambulance, hospital, and all healthcare workers who often risk their own lives to save ours. Please protect them as they continue their most important duties. We also ask your protection for all of our armed forces throughout the world as they protect us and this republic from those who would do us harm. Their dedication and service have resulted in death and injury for so many for nearly 250 years. Bless them. And now, as we leave the chamber tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keeping us from harm until we meet again. All this we pray in the name of your son, our Savior, the risen Jesus Christ. Amen.
Arlene, roll call please.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Bliss?
Here.
Now, we're going to have a special word, chief work. Please step forward.
Over the years, we've done different presentations and things like that at different times of the year. And, of course, this year has been strange like that with the last year. So, we're a little bit out of our rotation and timing, but we still like to each year celebrate our officer of the year award in front of number one.
In front of, especially in front of council. I break this every time, I think. Is it on? So, tonight, Officer Twinner, if you'd go ahead and come forward. You're hereby presented the Sedalia Police Department's Officer of the Year Award 2020 for your dedication, efforts, and support in the fulfillment of the Sedalia Police Department's mission and goals. Your selection as Officer of the Year is based upon your demonstrated dedication and duty performance, particularly during calendar year 2020, but also for your overall development to date. Officer Twinner began his career with the Sedalia Police Department in 2019. Since that time, Officer Twinner has demonstrated many important attributes of an excellent officer. Two of those attributes are dedication to our citizens and community through his efforts as a patrol officer, and his dedication to teamwork and overall good of our department. Officer Twinner has established himself as an extremely proactive officer with a specialization in drug interdiction. Officer Twinner often takes the drug cases he takes at a patrol level and investigates them to a level much deeper than typically seen. His willingness to take these extra steps often brings him in direct cooperation with other investigative units within the department and members of area agencies. This thoroughness often uncovers far greater illegal activity within our community than the initial arrest revealed. Officer Twinner has not allowed his success within this area of specialty to detract from his overall performance or his responsibility to his shiftmates. His sergeant, Kevin Klein, describes him as a team player who fulfills all expectations placed upon him and praises him for thoroughly investigating every crime he reports to the furthest extent possible. Officer Twinner recently recognized an opportunity to bolster the department's recruiting efforts and took the initiative to create a professional recruiting video as a valuable tool to add to the department's efforts. It is among my greatest pleasures as chief of the Sedalia Police Department to present the Officer of the Year Award each year. I am honored to present this award to you, to have you as a member of the Sedalia Police Department, and to serve with you. You have our best wishes for continued success in your career and in your service to our community. God bless and serve well. Officer Twinner serves on our night shift, so after this presentation, he's going to get back out on the road. But he does a great job, and hopefully you guys got a chance to see the video that he created as a recruit video for us. If not, we're going to publish that soon. So, thank you, Brent.
Chief, as I said, that awards bag was really special. It was fun to see all the officers there and all the families. I don't know how many children we had.
We've got a lot of children.
It was a great, it was really fun. And then we had a kid, I mean, and Jeff were at a prayer breakfast Saturday, and we were recruiting police officers that day. We had several high school students, had three, as a matter of fact, that wanted to make the prayer. And I said, "We're going to get you a couple." Thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have a motion to further minutes?
Then move.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Vice Minister President Steve Bliss.
Bliss, your first, on this, Penny?
Yeah.
You ready?
I'm excited.
It's an easy one. Okay, here we go. So, this is, I'll go through this, but this is just a simple ordinance to make a correction on the food truck issue that we dealt with in the last couple of weeks. That, I'll just paraphrase the administrative report, that initial ordinance intended to have regulations for food trucks on the fairgrounds except during the fair, and the wording was quite correct for that. And so, this ordinance will correct that, and it will also include the staff recommendations to add an option for a free day license at the cost of $25.
Any questions? Counsel? Obviously, we've had significant discussions.
Yeah, I think it's something you talked about. Read the ordinance?
So, read the ordinance, please, Arlene.
Deal number 2021-67, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Regarding Division Nine Mobile Food Vendors to Chapter 12, Article 2.
Second reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Deal number 2021-67, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Regarding Division Nine Mobile Food Vendors to Chapter 12, Article 2.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor?
Public Works? You have no report tonight, is that correct? Public Works?
All right, we have, we have five items tonight for Public Works. The first one is amendment to the fellow power agreement with MC Power. The bonding company would like some clarification on the bond requirements. As per the statutory requirements for public works contracts as well as good business practices, we include the requirements for performance bonds in the contract for their solar power installation project. Performance bonds cover the construction of the project in the event that the contractor does not complete such construction. Our agreement with the contractor, though, covers not only the construction, but also ongoing maintenance to meet longer-term performance standards. The bonding companies request that language is verified that the performance bond only applies to the construction. Staff recommends approval of an amendment to the agreement with MC Power Companies Incorporated, which specifies the limitation of the performance bond to construction.
Any council discussion? Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Deal number 2021-68, an ordinance approving an amendment to the solar power construction agreement.
Second reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Deal number 2021-68, an ordinance approving an amendment to the solar power construction agreement.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor?
The second item we have is we need a replacement of the starter assembly and cabinet on our water well number of 11. Those items have deteriorated over time and have failed. The staff solicited bids through an invitation for proposal for bids, processed, and received two bids. MC Power Company submitted a bid with $18,804.89, no exception. Staff is familiar with their work and has no knowledge of any deficiencies. Therefore, staff recommends award of the contract to MC Power Companies Incorporated.
Any council discussion? Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Deal number 2021-69, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for a water well starting assembly and cabinet replacement.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Deal number 2021-69, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for a water well starting assembly and cabinet replacement.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor?
The third item we have tonight is a one-year contract extension for the Duke's Root Control Incorporated. The sewer system utilizes a service for chemically controlling tree root penetration to the collective system. In 2017, this service was bid out through a formal request for proposal process, and award of the contract was made to Duke's Root Control Incorporated. This contract was for one year, with the option to renew for four additional one-year periods. In each extension, the cost may increase up to the amount of Consumer Price Index increase for that period. Staff has been satisfied with these services for the last four years. Therefore, staff recommends exercising this final option for a one-year extension to the contract with Duke's Root Control Incorporated for root control services for $23,646.93.
Any council discussion? Read the ordinance, Arlene, please.
Deal number 2021-70, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension for chemical root control application.
Second reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
An ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension for chemical root control application.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
The fourth item we have tonight is a change order for the solar array improvement. In December, when the original agreement with MC Power was entered into for the solar array project, the exact height was not known at the water filtration plant to keep the panels out of flooding. After reviewing elevations and the FEMA flood level data, it's determined that the structure needs to be raised an additional 18 inches to protect the panels from flooding. This is because of the proximity to Flat Creek. Staff recommends approval for change order number one to the contract with MC Power to raise the structure to 18 inches by 18 inches for an additional cost of $23,663.11.
Any council discussion?
Yes, I disagree with this. I think that should be the problem. I feel that they should have known that the height should have been raised, and I can't see us paying $23,663. I disagree with that. I think that they should be the ones to go and do that at their own cost. I think they messed up.
Any other council discussion? Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Deal number 2021-71, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for solar array improvements at the water filtration plant.
Second reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Okay. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for solar array improvements at the water filtration plant.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
No.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
No.
And Bogus?
Yes.
Okay, we have six yes and two no.
The final item we have is a letter agreement amendment with Olson Incorporated. Included in the strategic plan for the Water Pollution Control Department are projects to rehabilitate and upgrade the Main Street Lift Station, along with upgrading the central wastewater treatment facility to increase capacity. Council previously approved the contract with Olson for engineering and design of the Main Street Lift Station project. Staff recommends adding to the scope of this contract to include construction management and inspection services for $35,340. These services will expand the responsibilities of the engineering firm to ensure that the project is built as designed, and therefore performed as expected. Related to the lift station project is the central treatment plant upgrade. The Olson Engineering Firm has previously performed work, designed work for the city on this plant, and through that work have indicated that this plant's capacity could be expanded. Since that work was performed, the engineering firm conducting our master planning has questioned the feasibility and amount of increased capacity potential for this plant. Therefore, staff requested Olson to complete a comprehensive review of this plant design. Staff recommends adding $20,463 to the current agreement with Olson for this design review work on the central wastewater treatment plant.
Staff is here, if council has any questions? Any discussion, council? Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Deal number 2021-72, an ordinance authorizing letter agreement amendment number one for the Main Street Lift Station project.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor? Oppose?
Deal number 2021-72, an ordinance authorizing letter amendment agreement number one for the Main Street Lift Station project.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Major Bell, head of talks.
We've got one item on the agenda tonight. It's an ordinance amending the abatement fee schedule. So, in code enforcement, you've got basically two paths you can go down. You can go down either one, or you can go down both of them at the same time in dealing with public nuisance to try to compel the property owner to come into compliance. The first path is citations. You can issue those on a daily basis. The second path is administrative, where you actually go in after you've noticed up the property owner and you abate the public nuisance, whether that's weeds, trash, garbage, stuff like that. So, in reviewing that fee schedule, we figured out that we hadn't reviewed that, I think, since like 2006. So, those prices in that fee schedule were way out of date. And then also, the trash tonnage, whenever we're going in and abating a bunch of trash, that was a flat fee of $145 and didn't reflect actual cost. So, we met with staff, came up with a fee schedule that actually reflected true cost, and that's what you have in front of you tonight.
And after, and staff have worked on this, and there's due diligence on it, I appreciate that. Any council budgets? Read the ordinance, please.
Deal number 2021-73, an ordinance submitting Chapter 10, Article 10, Division 2, International Property Maintenance Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Deal number 2021-73, an ordinance submitting Chapter 10, Article 10, Division 2, International Property Maintenance Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
Arlene, white one, please.
Two members of the city council from Mayor John Cady. These are all reappointments. Citizens Traffic Advisory Commission, and all of these are three-year term, expiring June of 2024. Chuck Leusch, 908 West Broadway. John Rucker, 909 South Arlington Avenue. Dennis Henderson, 2702 Claritin Road. James Callis, 3217 Cunningham Court. And then for the park board, these are also reappointments. These are three-year terms ending June 2024. Connie Washington, 721 West Cooper. And Dan Van Dyne, 2800 Gregory Lane.
Motion to approve and block?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? License, please, Arlene.
Okay, we have one new one and four renewals. The new one is for Christie Long, doing business as Wildlife Ridge Winery, 34751 Miller Road, Smithville, Missouri. It's for a special event license for Jacob Lewis's wedding at the venue on May 22, 2021, and that's located at 219 South Ohio. The renewals are Joseph Fisher, doing business Liberty Center Association for the Arts, 111 West Fifth, for liquor by the drink license. Daniella Reyes, doing businesses to Kiaria El Constino LLC at 810 West 16th Street for a packaged liquor, liquor by the drink, and Sunday sales license. Vipul Patel, doing business as Liquor Locker A at 513 West Main Street for a packaged liquor and Sunday sales. And Brett Sorrell, doing businesses VFW Post 2591 at 121 South Ohio for a packaged liquor and Sunday sales license.
Motion to approve and block?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Any council members, city ministers, that could tell us? At this point, we should vote for, we can invite the citizens to come up and address the council, if they would like to come up and address topic, names, and addresses. Please.
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for...
Could you step a little closer to the mic for any people that are out?
You might need to pull the mic to you.
How's that? You okay?
I think so.
How about now? Testing one, two, three, four. Okay. We have some maps of what is going to go in our county, whether you'd like to see them, we could pass them out, or...
You're welcome to.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and start my deal. I've kind of been nominated to start this. I'm not a very good speaker, so a little nervous about this, but my name's David Gurkin, and I'm from Lamont. I'm here with a group of concerned citizens of Pettis County. Our issue is with the Pettis County Development Company. They're wanting to start a landfill and recycling.
Can I ask a question, I think it's clear on that, this Pettis County Development Corporation has no connection with economic development?
None whatsoever. So, as I was saying, I'm 71 years old, I'm a third-generation farmer, and I do not want to see what I think's coming here. I feel like the people of Pettis County do not want to see what's coming to the community either. Pettis County Development keeps stating about recycling. They anticipate recycling, but they don't say anything about a landfill. But we know that they have permits or release for geological survey for landfill, nothing about recycling yet. They just anticipate recycling. So, our group's not opposed to recycling, however, we are opposed to another landfill in our county. My anticipation is what they call this is a strategic location with vast amount of land to the west and the east of what they've already purchased, which is prime farming ground. With that, they don't have railroad frontage right now, but the other two properties do have railroad frontage, and they're in an older generation. It's probably just a matter of time where they can buy that property too, which a farmer can't compete for the farmland that they're buying. So, what I anticipate seeing is them putting in a landfill that will be the hub of landfills in the United States. We're already getting trash from various locations, and I see more coming, and I don't think we want that for our county. Pettis County's known for farmers and agriculture. I would hate to see this turn into a full-blown landfill operation, which can happen with their strategic location. I anticipate Pettis County will become a trash hub, and this operation will only get larger. Pettis County already takes vast amounts, which I said that already. And as of now, when you come to Pettis County on Highway 50, you already see huge landfills by Sedalia. And now, they are wanting to put another eyesore on 50 highway for people to see that it's going to the lake or the Missouri State Fair. I think our county would rather be known as the Missouri State Fair than landfills through the United States. So, our group understands that we need landfills, but we don't need more in Pettis County. We don't know how to stop this, however, we're asking for your help to get the word out to everybody in Pettis County, so they know what's going on in the county too with We should ask people in Pettis County if they want this to be a part of the county or for this to be the home of the Missouri State Fair. We're asking for you to get the word, help us get the word out in Pettis County. If there's anything else you can do to help us, we think maybe you could make a statement to the county commission for them to help us stop this from coming to Pettis County before it's too late. So, there's others in our group that's got a lot more information, we'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Mr. Gurkin. Anybody else would like to come forward?
My name is Mark Reekoff, and I am from the Houstonia area. We have farmland next to Dave Gurkin. I don't know that I can say much more than what Dave has already said. The proposed landfill, in our opinion, it's going to be an environmental hazard, I think a health hazard, safety issues are, look like that's concerned with them. The biggest thing I feel like, and I think our group does, is a lot of this stuff is coming from way out of county and Kansas City area for one, and we kind of think that each county or each area should take care of their own trash. And as Dave said, this repository, as they call it, could turn out to be something nobody really wants to see. We do see the trash bags along the highway, through town, west of town, just about everywhere, and we really don't want to see any more of that take place. So, anyway, as Dave says, we're asking for your help, support, information to the county commission, and if there's anything you all... and if there's anything you all can do, and it would be greatly appreciated, and appreciate the time to, that you all have given us to state our case. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else from, please come forward.
All right, all right. How do you feel about if the landfill was only for Pettis County only? How do you feel about that?
Well, that, I mean, that's something that, yes, we should take care of our own trash. I feel like all the communities ought to take care of their own trash. It's got to go somewhere. And I feel like if we have a landfill for Pettis County, I'm, I think everybody knows that's just a necessary evil, so. But my-
That's badly over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, why should we take the hazardous materials and the, uh, and all the other materials from cities that are well, that can, that can more than enough take care of it themselves?
I agree.
So.
I agree with you.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Brittany Shoren. Just going to add a little bit to what everyone else has said. Um, you can see they have a total of six hundred and twenty-eight acres. Um, what does the future of Pettis County look like with that much dedicated to trash? Whether is it a pulp mill, you know, um, or any of these other facilities, and especially the landfill? So we're coming to you, city council members, to ask for support in coming up with a solution to preserve health and welfare of our county from the proposed solid waste landfill. Our county already holds a hundred and seventy-one acres of statewide trash that has made an eyesore and a health concern to the surrounding neighbors. And adding another landfill within six miles of the existing one has gained exponential concern. We have hundreds of signatures collected from the community members who also oppose this. We as constituents should have a voice when valid concerns arise. There are great risks in such development and risks that need to be weighed before the damage is done. Some of the risks include, but are not limited to, noxious odors putting air quality into question, potential contaminants affecting water quality, devaluing property values all throughout Pettis County, not just the neighbors, immense amounts of water requirements, the pulp mills lowering the water table and making the water quality questionable. Our area has already been compromised by tyson. People have had to change their wells and such, so this is something we are concerned about. Uh, road and traffic issues and noise pollution. I mean, there's ordinances where you can't use your stake break through a county. I can't imagine what the landfill or a huge facility like this is going to sound like for us. Uh, some of the questions we are left with is, does Pettis County want the trash from other states coming here? Not just Kansas City, St. Louis, but other states as well. Can we limit it to only- So, that's okay. Okay. So, um, we'll just leave it at that, and if you guys can be of any help, um, that would be great.
Thank you.
Have you been to the county commission yet?
Uh, we've tried to talk with them.
If you can, approach the mic because this is going out on the air.
Uh, yes, I've talked to Jim Arkham and David Dick both. Uh, David Dick three times while it was going on, while, while we knew stuff was going on. And he just said, if you find out anything, bring it to us. And that's basically about as far as we've got with them. So very little, very little interest. It's like, uh, they want us to do their job for them instead of them looking into it for us. We feel like that we elected them to do this, and we aim on meeting with them again to see whether maybe they show more interest in it.
Thank you, Mr. Gurken. Anybody else would like to come forward?
Has the land, or land parcels already been sold to this company?
Uh, they are currently in a contract, uh, while they're doing testing and things.
Thomas, I don't think we all heard your question.
I asked if the land or land parcels already been sold off. And she said they're in the process of a contract and, and, uh, and testing. Have we spoken to the land owners?
We'd like to ask a question. Mr. Gurken?
Uh, it hasn't been sold yet. It hasn't, the land hasn't been transferred. It's, the, the owner of the land told me that when I talked to him about before it ever went through, that there's a getting fifty thousand dollars a year for three years. And at the end of that three years, that locked in seven thousand dollars an acre. And he assured me that he would not sign the contract if there was going to be a landfill put in there. And after I talked to him, about two weeks later, Presidio called me and told me that he understood that Mark thought I had some issues with what was going on out there. And I said, yeah, I don't like anything about it. And so he tried to tell me how good it was going to be for the community, how many jobs it's going to bring in. And, uh, he told me, if you don't like what you see in five years, we'll buy you out. And he also told the lady sitting right back there that joins the property right atop the hill that he'd buy her out. So I don't feel like we need them type of people in our community. And they, they basically ruined the relationships in the community with the people that own the land. That's what kind of people we're dealing with, and I don't feel like we need them in Pettis County. Also, the young lady there and her husband moved back here from Pennsylvania to start their life here, to raise family, to get away from stuff like that. And that's what they're moving to if this comes here.
Thank you, Mr. Gurken. Anybody else want to come back?
I just wanted to follow up on something. We're in the process of coming up with a proposal for a county ordinance so this landfill doesn't proceed forward under, I think it's statute one ninety-two, Missouri state statutes. I just wanted to say we're working on something to go to the commission with, so.
Mark, I would, I would like to address you on one thing. I've had a long conversation with a couple of your members that are with this group. Keep in mind, we have about ten years left on the current landfill that we have here, okay? That brings another issue within our county.
Correct.
And where we're going to go with it.
Right.
Okay. That's going to increase prices if it has to leave this area.
Right.
If you look at, and one of them has brought up the idea of having it, no, no longer have a landfill within the county. If you keep in mind, years ago, the Menifee Quarry was already lined and ready to go under the federal guidelines. They spent over a million dollars in that area. So this is a double-edged sword as, as we go forward. It affects a lot of different things in, in this process that we're doing.
Well, I'm not, I'm not advocating eliminating a landfill in Pettis County. Our big thing is having out-of-county trash coming here. Because we all know trash has got to go somewhere. We need to take care of it. I feel like we need to take care of our own here, rather than be a repository for, say, Kansas-
The problem we have with that is the same what we have right now. We all don't like the trash coming from Kansas City and into here because of what happens when it gets here and along the roads and every place else. But that's a contract that's subject that we cannot control.
Sure.
It's not our contract.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carl Yagers from Lamont. Uh, they pretty well hit on everything. One thing that, uh, I've researched it, uh, talked to people that are involved with some paper mills. Uh, they said it takes tremendous amounts of water. They was telling me millions of gallons of water a week. Uh, after doing research, I found out that EPA is, and I deal with EPA on a very small basis, that in time EPA follows these paper, these pulp mills, and they will more than likely put an air monitor somewhere real close to Sedalia. What I found out is when they do that, that future growth almost comes to a stop. No company wants to come in where their EPA's monitoring has, has an air monitor, which, which I can understand that. Uh, the, the group, just like what you were saying, Jeff, we're not opposed of a, of a, of a landfill at all. I mean, just like Mark said, it has to go somewhere, and we're going to produce trash forever. But we are, we're all on the, on the agriculture side is, we want to leave this, this earth better than when we got it. And as we build more of this, the environmental side of it, the water side of it, uh, just becomes an issue. Uh, and no matter where you build one, you're going to get some resistance. I understand that. Uh, but the company that's doing this, and I've asked a lot of questions. Number one is, where, who's actually building this? Where's the money coming from? There's no answers to that. I got a theory, and I, what I've been told is, it could very, more likely it is foreign money, it's Chinese money. Uh, now, I don't, I don't know that. That's kind of what I've been told. Uh, but there's, there's a lot of unanswered questions is, as recycling is great, but what I've been told is, that's what they hide behind. That they will say, well, the markets fell out of the plastic. We're not going to do that no more. The markets fell out of the glass. We're not going to recycle glass no more. And in time, they will move it to a landfill and a pulp mill. It's kind of what I've been told. Uh, I have been told by some of the commissioners that it, they, the proposal that they have seen, it will have trash railed in here. That's why they want it close to a rail. So if they're going to rail trash in, God only knows where it's going to come from. Uh, but it's, but we're not against it, except if they want to do it, just do it for Pettis County, recycling trash. And I appreciate y'all's time. Appreciate y'all hearing.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks for coming to Susan.
Oh, do you, uh, do you know what section of chapter one ninety-two that you guys are basing your ordinance on? Just carry it. Do you know what section of chapter one ninety-two that you're basing your ordinance on?
No, we haven't got.
Okay. Just carry it.
Yeah, one ninety-two is the state section. For the special, our county. Well, uh, one ninety-two, three hundred is where the health, oh, where the health department got the authority to do. Well, I'm saying we're not almost there. Yeah, the county organized under sixty-six or something like that.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks for coming.